All right, this time we'll begin our meeting by approving our agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Carrie, second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Thank you. All right, this time we'll entertain public comment. Meetings held in public according to the meetings law is not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value your input from the public. Please direct your comments to the Board of Education. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-minute mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the board's records. Thank you. Is there any community members like to speak?
You can, they hear you.
Susan Brown, 75, 18, Nickrobacka Road. Tonight you are looking at the second reading of the Graduation Options: Early Graduation and Accelerated Programs, part of the policy manual. As a parent of a child who would have greatly benefited from more acceleration than I fought tooth and nail to get her, I think there is a piece lacking in that policy about providing acceleration prior to eighth grade. Our gifted kids do not suddenly become bright in eighth grade and need acceleration. They need acceleration throughout. They need access to differentiated curriculum throughout. And without having it as part of your policy manual, it does not become an integral piece of the programming that the teachers put in. It becomes a piecemeal, aggressive parent who has to go and fight for it tooth and nail for their child. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other members like to speak? Okay. This time, is there any board member comments? Pam?
This past, oh gosh, don't remember, it was last week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Ron and Matt and Carrie and Dr. Calvin and I went to Bosse's, to their open house, and it was the first time I was there to actually see the school. And I was so impressed. We had the culinary students there serving us, and that was nice. Got to see some former students and, but then our little gal from Wayne, Brenda Welk, took us around, and she's in the nursing program, right? And I am just so impressed with the programs they're offering and the level that the kids will be job-ready to leave was so impressive to me. Plus, over Christmas break, I had a couple friends of mine whose children have graduated a whole semester early due to the accelerated credits they received as seniors here, and they were just commenting how appreciative they were and how the kids really appreciated that. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, on that same tour, I've been to the open house several times, and I found that this, while school was in session, was a much better experience. It really gave you a much better idea of what actually happened there. Everybody was there, everybody was engaged, and then you got to talk to the teachers who were pretty into what they were doing. You could tell their enthusiasm, it showed very well. So I was quite happy with it.
Ron?
Within the past week, there's been some new research that's come out on the difference in wages between those who have a high school diploma and those who have a college diploma. Right now, those who have a college diploma are earning somewhere in the average of 56% more than those who have just a high school diploma. That's the largest gap between the two educational levels since 1973. We also know that while the state says that if you get a 75 on the English regions and you get an 80 on a math region, then you're college and career-ready, but that's not what some of that research evidence says about is college and career-ready. And I'm not advocating that kids go to college. You don't want to go to college because we know that four out of 10 kids who start college never finish. So what I'm saying is that there is also research that says if a student graduates from high school with college, with 18 college credits, they are much more likely to be successful in college. So I think part of what we need to do is to look very strongly at our students who are not going to college and to see what sort of programs they are coming out with that will guarantee them the kind of economic success that those kids who go to college and finish college would get, you know, courses like our Bosse's programs, and we've got to look at some of the certificate programs that are available through Bosse's. So I would encourage them in that direction. And then, a couple meetings ago, Tim mentioned where we stood in the niche rankings in New York State, which Wayne Central was 220th. And then the last meeting, I went back and looked at the business first data from 2013 and where we stood versus those 10 schools. I went back and looked at the 2015 data, and I looked at the five schools that were above us in demographics and the five schools that were below us in demographics, and then I looked up our state rank. We are exactly in the middle, exactly. So that's something that we want to continue to monitor to make sure that our niche ranking is consistent with our demographic. Thank you.
Carrie?
Tonight, later on in the meeting, under personnel, one of the items that we'll be looking to approve is the retirement of special education teacher Nancy Galeno. Nancy has worked in Ontario Primary, and I just want to thank her for the years of service. I know Bob can attest, and Michelle can attest, and I, as a parent, can attest that Nancy's really a true gift, and she is very special in the sense that she works with some of our most challenging students. And she's going to be greatly missed because there are some days that she has been nothing shy of heroic with the children she has worked for. So I just wish her a wonderful retirement. She will be missed, and to thank her for the number of families, including my own, that she made the early years, because she primarily teaches the kindergarteners, a great first step into our school district and really just gave some of the students and families guidance in ways that when you navigate students with special needs, it just changes your perspective, and she's been phenomenal. And I just wish her a wonderful retirement with her children, her grandchildren, and just to thank her for everything that she has done. So.
Carol?
I just want to piggyback on what Ron did about our rankings and thank Ron for having the due diligence to always be researching when all of us, you are just the data, data king, Ron, and I appreciate that. But on another note, I want to offer condolences to Mary Ellen and Joan Tabor, who, on the loss of their mother, Arline Tabor, who worked here in the district office and who was married to Jay Tabor, who taught in the middle school and taught probably you and you and me, who probably retired, but yeah, but, and maybe Phil too, but just a nice family, and our condolences to their daughters and grandchildren.
All right, I'm just going to go on right now with this part. I went ahead, as the liaison to the PTO for the middle school, I went to the meeting last week. In fact, we gave a presentation in the beginning, and I stuck around for the rest of the meeting, and they were having some great discussions about the activities that they have coming up and working together with the other PTOs. And I thought that was a lot of work, and it was a pretty long meeting, but I think it'll be a good thing to come out of it. Also, I went to the, because my son's going to ninth grade for the eighth grade to get their schedules done, and I was impressed with the presentation that was given. They had a few quirks with it, but they showed them the different pathways, and they gave some of the information that Ron gave out about, you know, how much money you can make when you get this education compared to this, but other things that people could be at the highest end of not having a high school or a college education if they did really well with their training. So I thought that was good that they're not just showing that they have to go to college anymore, that there's other things that they can pick. So that was a good thing with that. So that's about what I had for now. On that, for anybody else have? All right, this time we'll turn over to Dr. Calvin, please. Right.
All right, I'm going to come to the table. I'm going to have Greg join me. If you could, just so I can see everybody. So, Board, a couple great things going on in the district over the next couple weeks. And just one, we're going to just share, we had a teacher, a special education teacher, Ms. Susan Goff, who was recently honored by Channel Eight. She received the Golden Apple Award. Go ahead.
The interview in high definition continues. For this week's Golden Apple, we drive east into the Wayne Central School District. There's a teacher at James A. Benaway High School who does what every teacher does. She gets students ready for their next phase in life. It's just that her students' next phase looks a bit different than most, and Susan Goff is getting a Golden Apple because she thrives in that difference.
Our coffee shop's a hot place in the morning.
Susan Goff is a functional life skills teacher. What that means to Christian Goddard is that she's helping him get ready for the real world.
Basically, this class gives me a learning experience in the community, and that's my main goal, is to like get more, hopefully to learn better what's out there in the community and such and such.
That's why she has her students with special needs work in places like the school coffee shop.
She embodies the fact that not every learning experience can be measured by paper and pen and judging by the smiles and the love that her students share with her, I think you're going to get a very good sense of who she is as a human being, and that comes out loud and clear in her classroom.
Or in the coffee shop, where we lay and wait.
Can you just stop in here real quick for me? I just want to say congratulations to you. You've been nominated for a Golden Apple.
Hi there. My name's Adam Chodeck. I'm with News Eight. I don't have a cup of coffee for you, but I do have a Golden Apple Award.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So it has been-
Students all knew of us.
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
It has been brought to my attention that you have brought so much care to this special group of students over the years, and we want to recognize that. What do you think about everything that you've been able to do with the students?
I'm very proud of the work that we do with our students here. I have a fabulous group of ladies that work with me. I've got great students, and we're able to do great things in the community. I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Goff, for being a most deserving recipient of the Golden Apple Award.
So we're very proud of Ms. Goff, and just, we appreciate her work and all of her efforts with regard to our students. So just wanted to share that with you all tonight. What a great highlight. Some upcoming things, Board, if you're interested, we, February 10th, 11th, and 12th, the middle school will be holding this year's musical production. The production this year is Seusical Junior. So the 10th and the 11th, 7:00 p.m., we'll be having the show in the pack, and on the 12th, at 2:00 p.m., the show will be here. I'm sure you're going to enjoy yourself. At our next board meeting, the children have asked, can they come for a couple minutes and just share a little bit from the production? So they'll be here with us right at the beginning of the meeting, okay? Couple things we just want to share, couple updates. First, just today, we received the governor's proposed state aid runs. This last week, he's been giving out information little by little. The executive budget provides probably about a billion more this year for different types of programs. 428 million in foundation aid across the state. Much of the aid increases, we know, however, we may not see them all, most to go into New York City or to some of the less wealthier districts. The proposed increase for us at this time is really not as much as we would like to see. It's about a 1.4 increase in foundation aid of just over 100,000. This is of some concern to us. We, this is just the proposed budget, so there's still discussions. We'll be advocating with our legislators, and soon I'll be doing the letter-writing piece, and I'll be asking board members if you can help me with that letter-writing piece. We'll get a note out to them, and we'll be meeting with legislators as well. You know, these don't even, the cost, we appreciate the increase, but it really doesn't cover other costs, health costs, legacy costs, those kinds of things. Our increase is four and five times that level in some areas. But again, this is the proposed budget, so it's really to be continued. There'll be discussions with legislators and lots of feedback soon, but I just wanted to share that with you. There's some information out from school boards. You should be receiving that email soon. I also, in my Friday note to you, I'll be sending you the information from rural schools so they can share with you some of their concerns as well, okay? Shifting gears a little bit now, I'll talk a little bit about the transition piece. So things continue to move forward. We recently met with our transition committee. We had a meeting last week, and then groups are meeting again this week, next week, the following week. Have to say, our first meeting was really great. Subcommittees were formed, and people are just moving ahead with meeting and talking about how we might best make the transition for our students. The entire group, by the way, just so that you know, one of the things that they did talk about was the change in the names of the elementary and primary school. Very interesting that night, everybody said that they really wanted to look at that and made some suggestions. The main suggestion was rename the schools to Wayne Elementary and Wayne Primary. Everybody thought that was the best thing to do, and so we would certainly like to make sure we share this with our community, get some feedback from them. But Board, if you're good with that, we'll come back at our next meeting. If you're great with that, then, you know, we'll kind of go from there, basically. But it was unanimous to get all 40 folks in the room to say the same thing. That's great. So a great start, and people just really came ready to roll up the sleeves and figure out how we might best make things smooth for all kids. So really, really good.
May I just say something about that? How much is involved in the legalities of changing the name of the beds report and the state reporting and all that?
So we would need to make sure that we talk with the state, share with them what the new changes. There's some forms that would need to be filled out and filed, and we want to make sure we get those forms up there right away, the sooner the better, because, you know, aid is connected with school name, so we don't miss anything and nothing gets lost. So we, that's pretty much what it is. You contact the authorities in Albany, give them the information, put it in writing, send it, they'll send you back the confirmation, and then we check to make sure that nothing gets off in terms of grants and those kinds of things. So it's just getting it out there and letting them know, basically, so. And we'll have our, of course, just so you know, we'll have our attorneys working with us to make sure we don't miss any pieces with regard to that, okay? I'm sorry, this email.
When you do the renaming of the school and all those reports and things that have to be changed, is there some duplication of that work that's the same as when you change the configuration of the school with different grade levels and such?
We do need to change, the reconfiguration piece, you're allowed to do that on your own. If you're reducing a school, we do need to let the state agencies know that as well. We need to tell them that we've reconfigured our schools. These grade levels or these students are going to be in these schools now, so we're in the process of doing that. Yes. In terms of next steps, just so you know, things that we'll be continuing to work on, according to the calendar that we have specified there, we will continue to work on schedules. We've started that work, very busy work. We've been working very closely to do a couple things. One, to make sure that we are able to share staff at the secondary level and at the elementary level. We want to make sure that we have lunchtimes in for everybody, and we're going to, we're really working at it. I got to tell you, our staff is coming together. We're hearing information from everyone who has thoughts, and we're just taking our time getting it done. We hope to have some drafts together end of January, beginning of February, and Board will be back and share with you where we're at around the schedule. So talks have started around that. We're going to continue to work on repair lists, so we, things, we know that in all of our schools, the end of the year, we go through, we paint walls, we do carpet, we, you know, whatever needs to be repaired, we're putting our list together, and hopefully over February break, we'll start doing some painting things, making sure flooring is all set, and our goal is to make sure that every building is ready to go by next school year. So we're working on that. Staffing is also being solidified, so we are looking now at our teachers on special assignment. We've posted all the openings that will be out and up for those Tulsa positions, and now getting people applying for that. We've been working very closely with our WTA and CSCA groups. So just this week, we met with our CSCA group, and we've come up with how we're going to make sure that those K-6 staff are taken care of. So just like the WTA members, what we're asking people is, in terms of for transfers from building to building, tell us where you'd like to go, what's your first, your second, and your third choice. Give it to us in writing, share with your principals. And then, after February 6th, shortly thereafter, what we're going to do is come together, the principals, and we'll look at the strengths of Stu's, the strengths of the staff, and we'll put people together in the best possible way to make sure that things are smooth for kids. So both groups now, we're getting information from them, and we'll be moving soon on that. Hopefully, our goal is, is right after or before the February break, we'd like to be able to tell all of our staff where you're going to be going for the next school year so that people can then start meeting with their principals, meeting as a team, talking about the next year, and having those conversations in February, you know, as opposed to in June. So we'll be doing that as we move forward. The fifth grade model is also being worked on in terms of what that will be looking like, and so our goal is, by the end of this month, beginning of next month, we'll be back and we'll be sharing where we're going with fifth grade so that everybody understands and knows. And we'll also, just so you know, have a nice document together. Once we figure the whole model out, we'll share it with you all. We're going to also make sure we have a nice document out there for the community so they can have all the questions answered around fifth grade. So working on that as well. And then the incentives that have been out for CSCA and WTA, both will end January 31st, and we'll know a better picture in terms of attrition with regard to staff. So we'll be back early February, and we'll share with you the progress on each of those items from the calendar list, okay? Want to shift here for just a moment and share with you, Board, that at our next meeting, we're going to have a special guest join us from GV Bosse's. We had a health concern that was brought to our attention, so we've had some folks come to us and say, you know, I have some concerns about OE. Now, I've asked them, tell me what your concerns are. And one of the latest things that we heard, you know, we heard a couple of things. One, is there some asbestos in the building? And we share, we have notebooks, we do, we have a person who comes through and walks through our buildings. We look at asbestos in all of our schools. When we recognize it, we see it, we always address that issue. So we have documentation that there are no concerns around that in any of our schools at this time. But we also, so once that one was resolved, then we had another concern that was brought to us. We had a person come, a couple people come and say, well, we are concerned that maybe in OE there might be mold in the building growing. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we look into things to make sure that there is no issues, ask some people, tell me where you see it at, where has it been at? No real indication of where and locations or anything like that. But we always want to be on the safe side, so just so that everyone knows, we did do some testing just to be on the safe side. We had some folks from GV Bosse's come in to test just to be on the safe side, and they looked into it. They'll be here at our next meeting, and they'll share the results. But what they found were no concerns at all. They also went through several of our places, our schools, and really began to look for signs, just those, first, they began to look for the normal signs you would see. So they looked for ceiling tiles that have black, you know, mold growing or mold coming from. They look at rugs, they look at walls, they look for water around baseboards, all those kinds of things. Didn't see any concerns at all. Then they did a test with a sample, what do you call a sample that's outside? The control sample?
Yeah, they do a control sample, so they take some samples outside-
And then they-
-to get what the readings are outside, and then they do the same sampling in the building, and then they compare the results from the building to outside.
Right.
And in every one of those situations, inside tested exactly where it was outside or better. Where there would be a concern is if the inside results were 10 times what the outside results were. And our results, and you'll get more of this at the next meeting, but they were either the same as outside or less, in every case.
Most, or none at all.
Right.
Basically. So, you know, when you, just so you know, in the atmosphere, wherever you're at, there are different kinds of things in the atmosphere. So you've got molds in grass, molds in the, you know, atmosphere and whatever those have you. And in our sites, just so you're aware, it looks like when people walk in with this stuff, basically, the molds get killed off from outside, basically. They don't, we don't have, we don't have that. We don't have any place from our results that we just received, don't have any mold growing from, it's not, just not there. And we will have the GV Bosse's people here at our next meeting, and they will share all the results with you and share that they don't have any concerns with that at all.
Just a thought, I don't know if, I don't know who brought these, this concern up, but is there a way we can reach out to them to let them know that their concern is going to be addressed at the next meeting?
I am already doing that with those folks. You know, I understand, and I want to be upfront, I understand that people have some concerns, but we want to make sure that we don't kind of just get going with speculation, and then the speculation is what it is, and we need to kind of help people to understand that we are very concerned about the health and safety of all children. So we will be going back, Jeremy. We'll tell people what is, and yeah, we'll certainly do that.
Those people, just to let them know, because I know some people aren't going to, if they miss it on the website, they might not know that their presentation is coming that way. They know that their concern has been addressed and they can say-
Absolutely, absolutely. Sure.
Most of these things are checked for routinely anyhow.
Yes.
And we would have those in records.
Right. Number of the things people brought up, we, yeah, we do have those things in records. I mean, we have people who come through every six months from GV Bosse's. They are safety folks, and they look for a number of things in our buildings. You know, they look at the walls, they look at the lights, they look at the wiring, they look at the floors, they look at all of these things, cracks in the floor, they look for those things, and then share with us, you know, if there are concerns. And we are not unique from any other district. This is what districts do, and we do our due diligence with that. And we want people to understand, if there is a concern, we will look into those concerns. We will. But we also need to help people to know, you know, when you come with something like that, you got to kind of share with us, where do you see this at, and what and how, and it can't be just a thought, it has to be something, but we'll look into it to make sure. And we did, and we'll have that whole team here, and they'll go through that, all of that with people so that you can see any of the results, okay? Yes.
Doesn't our insurance carrier also come once a year?
Yes.
And give us a rating and be looking for all those things?
Yes, yes.
They do what's called a risk management, yep. They do a risk management visit, and they, they come through the entire district, and the purpose of that is to look at your operation, and if they see things that are a concern to them that could create risk for us as their client, they bring them, they give us a written report to our attention. We address all those, and it happens-
I know they measure the thickness of the stuff on the playground and-
They look at everything, everything, everything.
Square alarms, things are labeled, and I would assume that they would also be looking for those types of issues as well.
Anything that happened, anything that's out there, or anything that would be a safety concern, they would share that, you know, and-
To their benefit, to have it addressed.
And ours, and our kids. We want to make sure kids are safe.
Yep, that's correct.
In addition, we also have the five-year building condition survey.
Yes, we do.
Every five years.
And we just had ours a year ago, year and a half ago, and they went through, looked at all the buildings, looked at-
Techs and engineers watched, we did the exact same thing, so.
So I think the point is, you know, please know, we've been a very safe district, will continue to be a very safe district. If there are concerns, we'll continue to look into them, and we're really wanting to make sure we do due diligence. I think all of our kids will continue to be safe and sound and healthy in our schools, okay? We'll get to you and work on that, okay? They'll be here at the next meeting. So just a couple things from the consent agenda tonight. We do have some CSCA, or CSE and CPSC recommendations, special education recommendations that we look for approval for. Couple personnel items, we have a long-term special education teacher that's going to be needed, a substitute for one who's going to be leaving us. We have an instructional and support staff leave of absence, both are FMA leaves that will need to have approved. We do have a tenure recommendation tonight, Ms. Wendy Herrick, I believe, was the last one, that we are recommending, stipend approval for aid and accompanying us, and then we have volunteer recommendations that are there as well. Meeting minutes also are there. We have one budget transfer, I believe it's from OE to an OP.
Actually, it's flipped, it's going from OP to OE.
OP to OE, excuse me, I apologize.
It was that member retiring, who did retire at the end of December.
And then we have just the policy committee minutes as well over there tonight. And then next meeting, again, we'll bring back some more stuff from transition planning, questions about, there were some questions that we received around student performance with some of our newer courses that we have put into place, so we'd like to bring that information back at the next meeting so you could see what some of the courses we just approved, how are kids doing, basically? And then, again, as I said, we'll have those folks here from Bosse's to share those results with the entire public, okay? Any questions tonight, Board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, now, the Board will move through the action items listed on the agenda. Need a motion to approve the second readings listed. Ron, second, Carrie. Any discussion?
I'd like to relook at 7220 on the graduation with the concerns that Susan had brought up, so.
My suggestion might be at this time to approve what's currently, because a lot of that was language from the state and the government, and then we can take a look at the concerns you have brought up and then go back and review some of those items in more detail. But right now- But right now, as it's written, it's more state language. We can move forward with those changes and then we can go and take a look at it.
We can amend.
Yeah, sure.
We can continue to amend that if we need to. So Susan, if you have anything, if Kathy doesn't have it, feel free to email me as the policy chair. That'd be great.
All right, and also, I believe we have addressed those and we have been looking at accelerated programs and it's in the strategic plan.
It is, in the plan.
A lot of stuff for accelerated programs and how we're gonna do those, so that's being looked at. Even if it's not exactly spelled in the policy now, but can later, but that's a generic one that we do.
I know Joe's here in the back. We do provide acceleration. We have a enrichment teacher, if I remember correctly, a teacher on special assignment that we provide. Right, and we, and those are for our early children. However, we are, as you said, on the strategic plan. We have listed in the plan the need to accelerate even more. So we're certainly, we're gonna, I agree with your recommendation to, we can look at that and if we need to tweak, we can tweak. That's no problem, we agree. We're, I think, all in agreement that we want to see good things happening accelerated wise for our own kids.
Carrie, I was, you know, maybe for clarification too. Ninety percent of our policy revisions come from the state.
They do.
We don't do them willy-nilly. Just wanted to clarify that.
The only one that really, of recently, and we're kind of just going back and we'll do it in our February policy meeting, was the wellness one, just because last year there was the audit on the food services and just kind of getting up to date because it had been a while for that one with so many changes that the government had come down with healthy hunger kids and certain things. Sometimes some of those have to be specifically district tweaked. But no, we as a policy committee just don't sit there and say, hey, let's, let's take a look at this and see how it best fits us. It's language that comes from attorneys from Erie One Bosse's, the state, the federal government, and it just has to fit into current law. So.
I just wanted to make that very clear in case somebody had questions about that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any votes? All right. Okay, need a motion to approve the item on the consent agenda. Carla, second, Pam. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, move on to committees' reports. Audit committee, ma'am?
Yeah, we met last Thursday. Went over the claims auditor logs for September, October, November. We didn't meet in December, so that was taken care of that work from then. Discussed external audit correction action plan and that's been sent to the policy committee. And got updates on single audit, extra audit, extra classroom audits and those, the drafts were just received that day. So we hadn't even looked at them yet and we'll be looking at those at the next meeting. And professional development. In the minutes, there's some training classes available for the board members and certain district staffed. And we were recommending that anybody that wants to take advantage of them, take advantage of them. And then there's some questions from our community member on the audit committee. And that, those questions were shared with Ray Wagner with, or to our external audit and he answered those questions and those are attached also. Our next meeting is February sixteenth at the district office, five thirty PM.
Thanks. Carrie, wanna do the policy and wellness?
Yep, wellness, there's no report. Policy meeting, we actually have two meetings coming up between now and the next meeting. Our first one's going to be this upcoming Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at ten AM in the district office. We, so the policy committee is going to be meeting with Greg Atzup and Fred Prince. We've been starting to examine two of our policies at our last meeting, both the transportation program and the transportation of students, which are policies fifty-seven-ten and fifty-seven-twenty at our last meeting, and it was just in the minutes. We're looking at the recommendations from the transportation study that came out from TAS earlier this year about some of the policies we need to be looking at that need to be a little bit more tied in with some of their recommendations and what best fit into the district. So we're going to take our time with it. So we're gonna, with Greg and Fred with the transportation piece, kind of get a little bit of their feedback. So we're gonna just have a discussion with them on this upcoming Tuesday. And then we're going to meet again February ninth at six o'clock in the district office. So we'll be continuing those and we will also be looking, revisiting the wellness policy that Tim has asked us to look at regarding the F化ed and is it just F化ed or?
It's the minutes, so we're aligned with the state requirements.
State requirements, okay. And that's all I got. Ten o'clock, right here.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Jeremy, second, Carrie. Any discussion about, all in favor? Any students, any one of us can sign here.
Wow, students take their full day, unbelievable.